Good evening. I think I'll call the meeting to order. It's Wednesday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. Commissioner Engel, would you lead us in the flag salute? Secretary Hillibrand, would you take the role?
Commissioner Engel, present. Commissioner Magnavowski?
Here.
Commissioner Nishimura?
Here.
Commissioner Turner Mike?
Here.
Commissioner Sheeler?
Here.
Vice Chair Van Duker?
Here.
Chair Flowers is absent.
Okay, and the first item on the agenda?
Consent calendar, approval of minutes for May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I move to approve.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, next item?
Public comment. Under public comment, section code five four nine, five four point three, members of the audience may address the commission on any adjut- item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against an agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by City Planning Division and the applicant for that agenda item.
Are there any speakers on non-agenda items?
None, and I have no speaker cards.
Next item, please.
Public hearing, item five A, Sunrise Vista Apartments, sixty thirty-one Sunrise Vista Drive, file number P L N two one dash zero one. The applicant is requesting a design review permit, entry permit to construct twenty-seven apartment com- twenty-seven unit apartment complex to comprise of three separate, three-story buildings totaling approximately twenty-seven thousand six hundred square feet. Other site improvements will include landscaping, parking, lighting, recreational space. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA. Calif- section one five three, three two. Project Planner Eric Singer.
Thank you, Stacy. Good evening, Commissioners. So as Stacy mentioned, we'll be discussing the proposed Sunrise Vista apartment complex. As Stacy mentioned, it's for a design review permit and tree permit. The site itself is an existing one point three eight acre vacant parcel, not many of those left in the city, located directly east of the Sunrise Mall property. What they're proposing is a twenty-seven unit apartment complex broken into three separate buildings totaling approximately twenty-seven thousand six hundred square feet. The associated site improvements, as previously mentioned, include drive aisles, parking, landscaping, recreational space consisting of a pool, community lounge building, and an open space slash drainage retention basin. The apartments themselves consist of nine one-bedroom units and sixteen two-bedroom units. So as I mentioned, it's one of the few vacant parcels left in the city located directly east of Sunrise Mall. So from this perspective, we're looking west. You've got Greenback there on the right-hand side and Sunrise Vista fronting the parcel on the east. The there, there have been previous development proposals over the years on this site. Almost every single one ran into significant issues due to the existence of a very large oak tree located more or less center northwestern corner of the site. Wanted to clarify, so my staff report actually incorrectly stated that the tree had been removed. The tree is still physically on-site, however, a tree permit has been issued for its removal prior to this particular project being brought to the commission. So wanted to clarify that the tree permit that is part of this project is not actually considering the removal of that tree. Looking at it here, that is the tree in question, actually. You can see it there, fairly dead. Unfortunately, it had deteriorated to such poor health condition that in two thousand twenty-one, the applicant had submitted a subsequent arborist report from the original. It's included as one of the attachments. That arborist report was peer-reviewed by the city's on-call arborist and did confirm indeed that the tree was in such poor health that leaving it on-site regardless of whether a development proposal was in the offing would potentially pose a hazard for any potential use of the site. So it was recommended that it be removed, and that was what the previous tree permit had authorized. Since the initial submittal, the site plan has been revised to include the pool and the community lounge area where the tree formally or will formally have stood. But the total site plan, it was initially designed around the fact that that tree was going to be pretty large and prominent. So looking at the architecture of the proposed buildings, they can be considered modern in nature. There's large cubicle vertical elevations broken up by varied depths of facade, windows and decks. Proposed colors include various shades of gray and taupe, as well as dark brown finishes with stucco and metal. The apartment complex, again, just to reiterate, it is providing several amenities for residents, including a community lounge, a pool, roughly eight to ten thousand square feet total worth of open space recreational area, and a central landscaped entrance courtyard located at the eastern end of the site between Buildings A and B. The project does meet the setback in height requirements for the limited commercial zone, as well as the allowable density outlined within the general plan, which is twenty units per acre. So looking at the site plan itself, staff did require a traffic study for the proposed apartment complex just based on the number of expected trips generated by the new housing units. The traffic study was conducted by Farr and Peers and concluded that, based on a number of factors, including the existing plus proposed conditions, project access and onsite circulation, and the total expected vehicle miles traveled, or V M T, the project would not have any significant impacts on traffic to the surrounding area. A noise study was also required, just to measure any potential noise effects from refuse collection onsite, pretty standard practice for most multifamily developments within the city. The study concluded that the increases in interior noise levels would be short-term, periodic. Because refuse collection is such a common thing for residential developments of this nature, the potential noise impacts were deemed less than significant. The parking standards for the number of units that are being proposed would require a minimum of fifty-two spaces on-site, which the applicant is providing through a combination of covered, uncovered, and motorcycle spaces. The primary pedestrian access to the site is located through the eastern central courtyard entrance here, drive aisles on the north and the south end. As the community is gated, the only pedestrian access, the primary pedestrian access is meant to be through that central gated courtyard. Staff did have conversations with the applicant on a few different occasions regarding creating some type of a pedestrian connection on the northwest corner of the site, considering the future redevelopment plans for the Sunrise Mall property, just kind of the emphasis that's been placed on pedestrian connectivity and the specific plan that was developed. The applicant cited time and again, grade changes, drainage issues were the primary reasons why that pedestrian connection could not be created, but staff did include a condition that is going to require the applicant to investigate more thoroughly the feasibility of creating that pedestrian connection. If no connection is feasible, there needs to be some type of documentation provided for staff's review and approval that deems it so. And last but not least, the project's required to provide two hundred and fifty square feet of recreational area per dwelling unit. So based on the twenty-seven unit total, the complex would be required to provide six thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Again, that is being achieved through the combination of the pool and clubhouse area, the retention basin, and the central courtyard. We have included another condition of approval that is going to require the applicant provide documentation as well, that the detention basin can be used as open space and as recreational space, at least during the dry months of the year. The tree permit portion is fairly straightforward, although, as I mentioned, it would not be addressing the large oak tree. So the site in total contained twenty-four protected oak trees that were greater than four inches in diameter, most of which the arborist report documented that they were in poor health. Of the seventeen trees being removed, only three were catalogued as being in good health totaling forty-eight inches of diameter at breast height. The applicant's required mitigation for the removal of that, for those inches, is going to be achieved through the replacement plantings that are being proposed on-site. So the project does meet a number of general plan goals, including expanding lodging opportunities near the Sunrise marketplace, as well as encouraging a variety of housing, housing types, including multifamily developments. The SEQA categorical exemption is the appropriate level of environmental review, and we provide a documentation in attachment nine, speaking to how it does meet those requirements of an infill development exemption of SEQA. And last but not least, staff found that it does meet the findings for the design review permit and tree permit. It's consistent with the development, landscaping, and design standards of the zoning code. Last but not least, as I previously mentioned, the categorical exemption under section fifteen three three two is the appropriate level of review. It applies to all environmentally benign infill projects which are consistent with the local general plan and zoning requirements. So these are staff's recommended motions, and I am available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions for staff?
I have a question. On the elevations, looking at the building from Sunrise Vista, it appears as if Building A is higher than Building B. And when I drove past the site, it seemed fairly level. Are they going to be elevating? Because it seems that the dri- water's going to drain towards the north. I would assume it's going to be graded towards the northwest, but there's that storage property, storage units there to the north of that property. Now, with them raising the south side of the property, is it going to create more of a drainage problem to where it could possibly go into the, the storage units to the north?
So I can let the applicant speak to the specific existing versus proposed elevations. My understanding at looking at the plans is that the existing elevation at the southeast corner is approximately six feet higher than it is at the northwest corner. The natural slope of the property itself tends to flow in that northwestern direction. I believe that's why that detention basin was proposed in that particular location, so that it could effectively capture the runoff from the site before it's concentrated into a single point of discharge. But the applicant's engineer is available to answer the more technical aspects of that question and address any potential issues with runoff to the public storage facility.
Eric, the, if you could go back to your very first, first or second slide. Keep going. I'm sorry, keep progressing.
Sorry, that, this one here.
Keep going.
Okay.
Right there.
Okay.
The upper graphics show the air conditioning units proud of the roof line and not behind a parapet wall. Is that correct? Or, I thought the, frankly, the parapet wall was going to hide those air conditioning units?
So the applicant provided a site diagram indicating that the HVAC units would not be visible from the street. However, staff did include a condition of approval stating that these HVAC units do need to be shielded behind a parapet wall. So before any building permits can be issued, the design has to be revised to include that parapet or screening of some type that will shield those from view per the zoning code, and that would be subject to staff review and approval.
That's what I recall from reading the report. That's why I sort of didn't jive with my memory. Thank you.
Sure.
Just out of curiosities, these are?
These would be marker eight houses, or, excuse me, apartments, yes.
Is the applicant here to, want to, want to speak to the project? If so, I'll open the public meeting.
Yes, my name is Leo, and we've been waiting for like, for three years to build this project, and we're ready to get it, build it since we got approval.
I understand that you, you, you built, you've built similar-type buildings or like, in San Francisco, the Bay Area.
Yes.
And I drove by today, too, looking at some of the surrounding buildings, the apartments that are sort of across the street. And I've been struggling with the color scheme and asking myself how well that fits with the community, and should it perhaps be something similar to what's in the area with more tan or something like that? But I also know, I'm also struggling because I see it as a, a progression of more modern architecture as opposed to what's typically been built in citrus sites, and I don't want to sort of hold that back. So I, I admit that I've been sort of struggling. Do you feel that having it, the grays and whatever else, given, given that the weather here is a lot hotter than the Bay Area, is that going to submit it to a higher heat load for the air conditioning as opposed to maybe some lighter colors?
Well, if you look at the building, there's, there's actually, the colors really light, and only those pops out, it's a little bit darker, but it's pretty light colors. Actually, if compared the colors across, and they're done with vinyl siding, I looked at it, there, there will be overall darker color than what's on presenting right now. My color's lighter.
Okay, okay, okay.
And we do have like, at the bottom, like, seeing pictures come out a little bit different, but it's more like a sand color, and I did present the actual color.
Like around the garage doors?
Yeah, on the first floor.
Yeah.
So it does kind of a little bit like I mentioned to the apartment across and around the area, so.
Okay, okay.
Because originally I had like a different, I had like more like, completely love, but I went more neutral, so it's actually like, should fit in good with the, what's around there.
Well, like I said, you know, I, I'm trying to be open to a different design that might attract a different, a different client. So I don't want to be, you know, against it just simply because of that. So, okay, thank you.
All right. Did anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question for staff. I haven't seen the final plans for the Sunrise Tomorrow project, but does it tie in with what is planned in that specific area for the Sunrise Tomorrow project?
I was gonna say, Casey might be able to better answer that. He has a?
Yeah, the Sunrise Tomorrow project is a very high-level document. It's not, it has a conceptual site plan. It's just one way that it can develop. I think providing a connection to that site, if the site's first, is a good thing, and then we can plan around it as the more detailed plans come forward with, with development on Sunrise.
Because when I was looking at the west side of the property, it's a pretty steep slope, and I didn't see a whole lot of accessibility to get towards the Sunrise Tomorrow area.
So that is ultimately part of whatever documentation needs to be provided to staff for review, whether that is the slope is too steep to provide adequate ADA accessibility or whatever the justification used. We just need to have that on record as showing that this was just not going to be feasible to create that, that type of pedestrian connection. That's why the, the condition was put into place.
It'd be great if it could, but there might be limitations. Anyway, thank you.
Are there, are there two ADA apartments?
I think more.
According to the plans?
Yeah, I think like, we have more than two, yeah.
Two?
Oh, two, yeah.
Two in Building Three?
They are split between, I can tell you now.
I was, I had?
There is one on the ground floor of Building A.
Okay.
And I believe one on the ground floor of Building B.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. If there's no other, oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Casey Fikeard, T S D Engineering. I wanted to help answer the question about the drainage. There is definitely a, a great difference between those two buildings that are adjacent to Sunrise Vista. There's about a four-foot grade difference. One, the northern building is about four feet lower, but the drainage is not going north to the public storage. It actually go to the drainage, the driveway that's right there, and then it actually drains to the west. And so, yes, there shouldn't, there is no drainage, additional drainage going to the storage. We will focus it and get it down to the drainage basin. That is in the northwest corner. So we have a drainage swale that runs down and gets it all the way down there. Hopefully that helps answer your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I will close the meeting. And can we have the resolutions, please? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash determining the project is categorically exempt from SEQA for section one five three, three two, infill development projects of the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve a design review permit to allow for the construction of a twenty-seven unit apartment complex comprised of three separate three-story buildings totaling approximately twenty-seven thousand six hundred square feet, and other site improvements, including parking, landscaping, lighting, and recreational space located at sixty thirty-one Sunrise Vista Drive, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and the attached conditions of approval, and approve a tree permit to allow for the removal of three unprotected trees totaling forty-eight inches D B H in order to construct a twenty-seven unit apartment complex comprised of three separate three-story buildings totaling approximately twenty-seven thousand six hundred square feet, and other site improvements, including parking, landscaping, lighting, and recreational space located at sixty thirty-one Sunrise Vista Drive, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and attached conditions of approval.
I will second.
So Vice Chair, it's fine that we read them all as, as one motion. I would like the, the, the Commission to actually vote separately on each one of them. So I think, Commissioner Engel, if you're fine, that motion will, will be done three times essentially. We'll just take three separate votes.
Do you want me to do that now?
I think you've already read it. I think you made the motion. It's just when Ms. Hillibrand takes the vote a little bit three times.
So I would say, all in favor of the first section of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? All in favor of the part two of the motion? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Not hearing any? And section three of the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Doesn't look like it. Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees, two hundred and fifty dollars, with the city clerk, not later than ten calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. Next item, please.
Item five B, zoning code density bonus update, file number P L N two two one six. The planning commission will review updates to the zoning code regarding compliance with state density bonus provisions and forward recommendation to city council. A complete list of changes can be obtained from the planning division. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA under one five zero six one B three of the guidelines. Project Planner Eric Singer.
So similar to the recent round of zoning code updates that were done, this is a much simpler set of updates that we're going to be looking at tonight. In particular, we're looking at changes to the California density bonus law and how that's essentially impacting our zoning code. This is all just in an effort to remain compliant with current state law. Some of the changes included in the language pertain to things like limits on impact fees, providing longer affordability periods on these units, incentives and concessions, some changes to how those are offered or what, you know, projects are eligible for them, sales of affordable units to nonprofits, that's a new aspect, and then not being able to require a submission of a pro forma to show that the concessions or incentives are required to make a project work of an applicant. So just as a very kind of high-level overview of what the density bonus law actually states, essentially, if a developer comes to the city and is asking, you know, they are promising that a certain percentage of their units will be made available to either very low-income or low-income residents, that corresponds to a, a set ratio of additional units that can be granted to them above and beyond what would normally be allowed in the general plan. So for example, if you're proposing ten very low-income units, you would get a twenty percent bonus on the number of units that would be provided. Easy math, you propose, excuse me, a hundred units for a development, ten of which are going to be low-income, you would actually be allowed to build a hundred and twenty units. Just simple math on that. Pointing to a real-world example that we've looked at recently, the Fair Oaks Senior Housing Project was proposed as low-income. So what would have originally only allowed for a hundred units actually became a hundred and eight units. The reason that this is important to consider is twofold. One, in order for the city to be eligible for the pro-housing designation that was brought before this body a couple of months back, we do have to make sure that our density bonus law is, is, is essentially in keeping with what the state law says. Additionally, there are several pieces of legislation currently working through the state assembly and senate that will probably increase the likelihood that more developers in the future will come asking for density bonuses for their projects. So the aspect of the updates that kind of most pertain to what this body would care about mainly have to do with the incentives and concessions section, some of the changes there. Number one, jurisdiction cannot waive a request for a concession by a developer based on the perceived impact to the physical environment, if there's a potential adverse impact to the physical environment. Parking standards, which are Uh, parking standards, which are always kind of a hot button topic and density bonus laws have tried for years to kind of reduce parking standards. Um, now if a developer comes with a proposal for at least forty percent moderate income units within a half mile of transit. Then the ratio of required parking is actually reduced to a half a space per bedroom. Last but not least, and this is particularly important, um, VLI or very low income or low income units would now qualify. Um, in for rent developments as well as for sale developments. So these, oh, go ahead.
Is there any, the first bullet cannot waive requests for concession based on adverse impact, impact to the environment. Is there any situation in which if there is a shown adverse impact? That that would override that or is that just carte blanche, no matter what?
You know, I am not, I'm not sure on the exact details of what level of proof needs to be provided to clear that bar. I know that it specifically said adverse impact to the physical environment. Now.
Okay.
That may, there may be workarounds to that, but typically when state laws come down and we're just implementing the language into the zoning code. Um, there's not a ton of wiggle room in terms of individual jurisdictional interpretation on something like that. If it's specified, can't be waived, then I think there's a high likelihood that it would be a pretty high bar to clear. Um, ultimately, the end goal of a lot of these state laws is just to increase the availability of very low income and low income housing. And whatever incentives or concessions can be provided to a developer to allow for that housing to be built. Is kind of what the state is weighing over potential impacts to the environment that could potentially be mitigated as well. That's at least my understanding of it.
I have a.
Of course.
Required to have five parking spaces.
Well, technically, yes, and it has to be considered a high quality transit station. And I do believe, I believe a bus stop would qualify for that. Um, but essentially, yes, that math would, would work out if it's a ten bedroom. So we're talking about half a space per individual bedroom.
Well, ten, ten one-bedroom units.
Ten bed, one-bedroom units, yes.
So then they would be parking in the street.
Likely, yes.
I have a question in regards to that too. That just means that they can provide that few. Generally speaking, they're gonna want to provide more and more than likely based on their marketing, right? So this is just making them able to do that.
It's giving them the ability to do so. Um, different developers have different approaches to parking. Um, if you speak to developers in the Bay Area, they may have a more anti-parking view. Because they have seen parking requirements as an impediment to development. I know though, obviously in a city like Citrus Heights, that could be perceived very differently. And the developers that are building out here understand the importance of providing adequate levels of parking so that it doesn't spill out into surrounding neighborhoods. Um, one thing to consider is that, for example, for the Sunrise Mall specific plan. Parking requirements had to be modified and adjusted to kind of meet the new reality of the need for, um, parking. And kind of the already existing overabundance of parking in a lot of developments. So it's just another way that the state is kind of emphasizing, hey, any way we can get a developer to build these low income units. Grant them as many, you know, carrots as possible to make it happen.
Right. And then I have a secondary question. I do not understand the VLI. Um, I don't, can you describe what this last item means?
So typically these housing incentives were, um, only provided for, uh, for sale developments as out, as specified within the zoning code. This extends those bonuses and, and incentives and concessions and everything that can be offered to a developer. To rental, for rental units and not just for sale units. So for example, um, if you've got the Mitchell Farms subdivision. If a certain percentage of those were to be offering, you know, low income, very low income units. Um, those parking standards could have been reduced, densities could have been increased beyond what was normally allowed. Um, but if those were all going to be for rental units, those incentives and concessions were not available to the developer. Now, those are being expanded beyond the just for sale units umbrella to rental units.
How do you have a for sale unit that's VLI or LI?
Well, my understanding of.
Selling just to income limited purchasers? Is that what?
There are, um, agreements that have to be signed by the developer that ensure that a unit is going to remain affordable for a minimum of fifty-five years. That means that once it's sold to the initial purchaser, that protection basically goes away. Um, there have been changes to that particular aspect of the law as well. Not to get too bogged down in it, but essentially the, the income levels, right, the VLI, the LI is all pegged to median area income. So let's say the median income in Citrus Heights is sixty thousand dollars a year. Then the state has brackets in which somebody would qualify as being low income, somebody would qualify as being very low income. And that's a family or it's an individual or a family making, whether it's fifty percent of the median income, seventy-five percent of the median income. So the affordability of the house, the actual, um, price at which the house is listed. Is pegged to what that family could reasonably afford. And it's a, it's a ratio that the state has worked out of saying, okay, if you are making fifty thousand dollars a year. Then you should only be able to dedicate twenty-five percent of your income to housing costs or whatever the ratio is. So the affordability of the unit itself is pegged to that formula essentially.
Sorry, sorry to take extra time, but so say in Mitchell Farms, you have some of these, um, units that have been sold to a purchaser. That purchaser cannot then sell that unit to a nor, somebody who does not qualify in the future?
Well, my understanding is that actually goes away after the initial sale.
Yeah, so, um, we're actually in the process of creating a, a program that'll address this exact issue. There are laws that, um, are in place that do restrict the sale. And generally we, uh, in order to get a density bonus, you have to enter into an agreement with the city. Um, that restricts that, um, sale or, or rental for a fixed period of time. So, um, that is what protects that, that particular thing. Um, there is, um, different provisions and that allow for equity sharing. Some cities do allow, um, for a person to be able to sell that property, but the equity has to get shared. So there's different models on how to do that. Um, but we're, we're actually working on that right now, um, to develop standards for the city.
Yeah, that's really, I mean, for rent it's easy to figure out, but for sale is kind of fascinating.
You were, you were done with your presentation?
Um, I'm all done. Any other questions that the commission has, I'm happy to answer.
Any other questions? Nope. Uh, I'll open the public hearing. If there's any comments.
None.
Doesn't sound like any. I'll close it. Can someone, uh, read the motion?
Yeah, I move to recommend the city council adopt a resolution to find the proposed amendments are exempt from the California environment. Uh, Environmental Quality Act CEQA under section one-five-zero-six-one-B-three of the CEQA guidelines.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I also move to recommend the city council adopt, actually, I, I think you gotta, right, you gotta waive the.
Oh.
No? Okay. Um, I move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter one oh six of the City of Citrus Heights Municipal Code Zoning Code Section as shown in exhibit A.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Uh, next item, please, Secretary Hildebrand.
Regular calendar, item six A, determination of general plan consistency seven-three-four-six Cross Drive. File number PLN two-two-dash-one-five Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District owns the subject vacant parcel. And has declared the property as surplus. Under Government Code six-five-four-zero-two, the planning commission must determine conformity to the general plan. Prior to disposition of any government-owned land. Project planner Allison Bermudez.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nice to see you. Um, this item before you is similar to a couple of other items we've done in the past where it's surplus property. It's gonna be for sale. The unique one, uh, aspect of this project is we don't own the land. Um, it's owned by the sanitation district. Um, so since they're another agency within our jurisdiction, uh, we need to make this finding. Uh, so they can proceed with their sale. Um, so Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District purchased this property on Cross Drive. Um, some years ago, um, for construction, a major construction project they had in the area. And they used this site, this site for storage, uh, for their construction yard. And so after that project's been completed, it's been completed, I think for several years, um, now they're ready to just finally dispose of the property. Uh, so they have requested this item, uh, before your body tonight to review it, that it's consistent with the general plan. So they can continue with the sale, um, of the property they consider surplus. As mentioned, this project is on Oak Avenue to the northeast corner of Cross Drive and Oak Avenue. It's about two-thirds of an acre. Um, it is vacant. It is a residential zone property. What we refer to as RD three, which is a single-family residential zone. It is on our general plan listed as a very low dense, uh, property. It meets the surrounding area, same general plan designation of all the properties, uh, to the east, west, and the south. Um, as a reminder, there is no proposed project that we're considering tonight. This is just a vacant parcel that will be put up for sale. Um, and then in the future, if the sale changes hands, future development will take the traditional development process. Um, be reviewed through planning and building, uh, depending on what's proposed. Uh, but there is no project we're considering tonight. It's just the conformance with the general plan policy that we must find in accordance with the state, uh, government code. As mentioned, it does meet the general plan. It is a residentially zone property, goal six and policy twenty-five point four. Both talk about underutilized and vacant lands, developing them and especially in our rural neighborhoods, which this property is. Therefore, it is con, uh, conforming to our general plan and we support the district being able to put the plan, the property up for sale. And so on the screen is the proposed motion.
Do any, uh, commissioners have any questions for staff? Doesn't sound like it. Um, I will open the public hearing. Any comments? Does not seem like any. I will close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt resolution number two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-six to adopt the findings required under California Government Code Section. Six-five-four-oh-two for the disposition of seventy-three forty-six Cross Drive by Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next item, please.
Planning manager comments, item seven A, planning commission meeting start time discussion.
Hello, Commission. I just wanted to update you. Um, I know a month or so ago, you received an email from me inquiring about the start time of the meetings. Um, and as, if you don't know, the city council has moved their start times to six PM. And so that is currently in effect. And just for the ease of public, um, understanding and being consistent. Uh, we wanted to change our meetings to their same start time. So there's no confusion. Um, so I did survey the commission and we did have one conflict unable to start at six o'clock. So I just wanted to update you on that, that we won't be changing to six o'clock, um, in, in the immediate future. Um, cause we don't wanna conflict anybody out being able to attend. But in the start of the new year, when, uh, several new commissioners or you will reapply, um, just, we will update the manual to have the meetings start in January at six o'clock. So just wanted you to be aware of that. Uh, so when you are considering reapplying, um, just take note that the meetings in twenty twenty-three will move to six PM. So we're consistent with the city council. So they'll continue to seven till the end of the year, um, just because we wanna, we don't wanna miss anybody being able to attend.
Are there any other items?
No other items.
And I will, at seven forty-two PM, I will close the meeting.